Ask you to be with our mayor, asking that you be with the city staff and each council member, asking that you would be with our city. Bless us individually and bless us collectively. Bless our state and bless our United States. God, we're asking that you would be with all the elected officials all over, and let them know, Heavenly Father, that we must do the right thing. In the name of Jesus, God, I'm just thanking you for being such a good God. We thank you, God, for helping us win that game last night. We thank you for allowing us to enjoy, and we ask your blessings now to continue to fall fresh upon us. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think the flag got moved somebody. It wasn't in the right spot.
Yeah, somebody did put it back.
Y'all may not have recognized that, but when we were looking like, we were like, oh, the flag's moved. So, okay. All right. Keep us on our toes. At this time, we will have a swearing-in ceremony for the mayor and the three city council members who were recently re-elected to another term on the city council. So I will begin that process. I will step down and ask the city attorney if he would come forward and administer the oath of office.
Yes, sir. Mayor, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of mayor of the city of LaGrange to the best of my skill and ability and as to me shall seem to be in the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection, so help me God.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Later, later.
Next, council member Nathan Gaskin. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of council member of the city of LaGrange to the best of my skill and ability and as to me shall seem to be in the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection, so help me God.
I do. Did it pass?
It did. For two of those. Okay. Thank you. Pretty hard, huh? Council member Tom Gore.
I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of council member of the city of LaGrange to the best of my skill and ability and as to me shall seem to be in the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection, so help me God.
I will.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of council member of the city of LaGrange to the best of my skill and ability and as to me shall seem to be in the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection, so help me God.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Will you please join me in congratulating these newly installed... In keeping with tradition, I would like to make just a very brief comment. It's essentially a word of gratitude. I would like to thank the citizens of LaGrange who have entrusted me as mayor of this city for the past eight years and have honored me by allowing me to serve for an additional three, additional four years, my third term as mayor. So I certainly am grateful to their support and confidence, particularly grateful for the fact that they allowed me to be re-elected to my third term without opposition. Having, having done it both ways, it certainly was, was nice to, to run in this capacity. But regardless of how we get here, whether we do so through a contested campaign or through a campaign without opposition, I think it is incumbent upon us all to recognize the, the importance of this work and the importance of the, the trust and confidence that's been placed upon us, and we have a solemn duty and obligation to those citizens that have chosen us to serve in this capacity, to, to respect that, to respect that obligation, respect that commitment, and that's something that I intend to do for the next four years, serving once again as mayor of LaGrange. I also want to express a word of gratitude to my family, several members of my family being, being here tonight, appreciate their support, appreciate them allowing me to, to serve in this capacity. They all know, and particularly Karen knows, that it is a time-consuming endeavor, but it's something that I'm passionate about and appreciate their support. I think it's always important for us to recognize and share a word of gratitude for the great city staff. Our city manager, Ms. Kelsey, and all of the staff of the city of LaGrange make our jobs easy. Things get done, things get done well, things get done professionally, and, and they do a fabulous job serving, serving all of our residents, but particularly appreciate the work and service that they do for the benefit of, of the council. And then finally, just a, a word of thanks to the six men sitting up here with me, members of the council with me. This is a great group, and I, I think it's worth noting that, that we really all like each other, we get along with each other, we laugh together. You know, in this very divisive political climate, from the state level to the federal level, communities all across the nation, there is so much division, so much animosity, so much distrust. It, it really, it inspires me and it makes me feel very grateful to live in a place like LaGrange where the seven of us get along as well as we do, which is not to say we always agree, which is not to say that we don't, we don't have discussion and debate. We're seven individuals who come from seven very different backgrounds and have seven different perspectives on every issue that comes before us. But we talk to each other, we discuss issues, we debate issues, we try to find consensus, and almost every time we do, because I think we recognize that we are all united by a love of this community, and the, the unity that we can bring is so much stronger than any of the division that, that might exist. And so I'm, I'm, I'm here to tell you tonight, gentlemen, and I, I recognize we're all guys up here in these elected positions, but, but I would say, gentlemen, that, that I think we are a model for how good government can function and how politics can work for the benefit of the residents of our community and how we can continue to, to work together for the common good of LaGrange and really the entire region, because we all know that even though we represent just the city, the work that we do has ripple effects throughout, throughout the entire West Georgia region of, of our state. And so I just want to express a personal word to all of you, Willie, Jim, McGree, Mark, Tom, Nathan, a word of thanks to all of you for, for your continued service on the council. So, thank you very much. That will conclude my remarks, and I will see if Councilman Gaskin would like to share a word.
Yes, just a few brief words. Just kidding. Wow, this is a, this has been a whirlwind of a journey to be re-elected, and I am so grateful to the citizens of the community for allowing me this opportunity to serve. It truly is a blessing, and I thank each and every one of the members of the community that voted for me, and especially those that didn't vote for me. I want to thank you as well, because I know that you can't make everyone happy, but you can sure try, and I think trying is what I do best. And I'm not always going to succeed, but I will keep trying until I am able to meet the needs of the community. With that being said, these, these past four years, I've learned so much from the city staff, all these gentlemen up here, and I'm just very grateful to them for sharing the knowledge that they have with me. And on a personal note, these past four years probably have been the best of times and the worst of times of my life, and I am grateful to this community, to my family, for standing with me. Thank you so much in going through this ordeal. And to these gentlemen up here and the city staff, and when I say that these guys, they, they came and got me up after I was knocked down, they really came to my house and they got me up and, and helped me out when I didn't think there was going to be a tomorrow. Terry, I haven't forgot about you. You know, there's a guy that just comes out of the blue and, and says, you know, get up, go eat, get up and see about yourself, see about your family, and don't stop. And thank you, I appreciate that. That means a lot. Ladies, Alice, you're the best mother a man could ever have. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to spend time with your daughter, and she meant the world to me. If there's anything that this woman right here needs, everybody in the city, that's my mother-in-law, get her whatever she needs, okay? But thank you again.
Thank you.
To all you gentlemen and to the entire city staff and the community, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes. Dr. Gore.
Well, I kind of hate to follow Nathan. What words can you say after that? But thank you for all of those who support us in our service to the city, echo the mayor's comments about our city staff. They do make our job much, much easier and help us in so many ways that the average person doesn't know about. For me, it's been a, been a long time, you know, being interested in this, kind of in the, in the DNA almost. We used to sit around at dinner table when I was in high school, talking about the sewer system. Not something that many people sit around and talk about at the dinner table, but it gave me the interest in, in wanting to be involved with the city. So thank you for all your support, and I look forward to these next four years.
Thank you, Dr. Gore, and Councilman Arrington.
Yeah, I'll be very brief. I just want to say thank you to my family for standing behind me for these past four years in this, in this, in this election where I just got re-elected, but also, you know, you, you have to thank the, the citizens of LaGrange, because they're the ones that put us in here, and they're the ones that elect us, and I, I do appreciate that. The first four years, I couldn't tell you what happened. The city staff kept me straight, I promise. They, they, hopefully this next four years, y'all won't have quite such a job to do. I thoroughly enjoyed the first four years of my, of my elections last year, so this year, I'm looking forward to seeing what we can accomplish again. And I, I do thank each and every one of you guys for kind of being that leadership role for me to follow. I look up each one of you for different reasons. Thank y'all.
Well, thank you. We're grateful for all of your service. We're here tonight for a public hearing to receive comments on the UDO text amendments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, City Council, a public hearing has been properly advertised. At this time, we would take any comments.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to speak on the UDO text amendments? Okay, seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed. For the benefit of the audience, if anybody is here because of a public hearing that was advertised for a rezoning on Vernon Road, that public hearing has been canceled for today. It will be readadvertised, and that public hearing will occur on February the 8th, and at that time, we'll receive comments on that proposed rezoning. Under delegations tonight, I have Mr. Leon Childs to give us an update on the AGCAO after-school program. Leon, if you'll come forward.
So, I've been reminded two or three times to keep this very brief tonight. Even before I came through the door, everybody was like, you're a long-winded, so keep it brief tonight. So we'll do just that. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. And Ms. and Attorney. It is an honor to be in such, with such an extinguished crowd tonight. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you all once again. My name is Leon Childs, the executive director of a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit after-school mentoring and tutoring organization. First and foremost, on behalf of my staff, partial staff, the community, myself, the youth, and my family, thank you all for a strong collaboration in stewarding funding in recent years. Without your funding, we would not be standing here tonight. I will be brief, as this is just an update on the performance and the new initiatives of the AGCAO. The program is still housed at 200 Moody Bridge Road, behind Hope Academy. The hours remain from 5:30 to 7:30 on every Wednesday and Thursday. We currently have five to eight tutors from the True High Ambassador Program, which currently two of my students are here from the Ambassador Program, my tutors. We currently serve 40 to 50 students per week. This is not a after-school program that just does something for the moment or any minute, we do this every single week. By the way, since everyone thanked their family, I would like to thank mine as well. My wife, Portia, and my daughter, Lado, for all the time that I have to spend this program because Lord knows, it ain't the money, right? On the waiting list, we have another 57 students. Due to social distancing guidelines, staff, and transportation, we're at a standstill. The AGCAO receives referrals from the juvenile court system, the True County School System, local churches, and the community. The AGCAO receives support and funding from the city of LaGrange, support from the True County School System, Walmart Corporation, the Pepsi Company, churches, Fokker-Erichar Enterprises, and the community. Because of your support and other entities, I am proud to announce that we were able to pay all of our tutors $15 an hour, which gave us a consistent source of employees that was going to come in and teach these students every single week. When you're doing something inconsistency, you have to have the resources that's going to back that as well. So the $15 an hour that you guys provided the funds for that day was the ability to pay these young women and men that come in and tutor those kids. Also, very, very great news. I am proud to announce that since March of 2021, the AGCAO has been able to embark on another initiative. That initiative is to incentivize and give the youth the motivation to stay on the right track and make good grades. That initiative is called Education Cool. Ever since March of 2021 to January of 2022, we have been able to give students over $4,000 in scholarships. Not bad for a small organization. Once again, I thank you guys very, very much for all that you guys have done for this organization, and I look forward to a strong future. But before I close and open up for questions, if you guys have something for me, I would just like to get my staff to give a brief update as well of the program.
Greetings. My name is Camilla Dunn. I am a senior at True High School. I am part of the True Ambassador Program. The True Ambassador Program gave me the opportunities to help my communities and also help students. I love helping students, which is why I joined Mr. Leon Tutoring Program. I love tutoring, because I am given the opportunity to help children to receive their bands and inspire them on a personal and academic, academic level. It's exciting to see how, how energetic a learner becomes as soon as they understand a topic when they're struggling with it, and it's an honor to receive a scholarship
Hi, my name is Ontario Scott. I'm also a junior at True High and I'm part of the Ambassador Program as well. I tutor for Mr. Leon Wednesdays and Thursdays. It's a pleasure and a great feeling to see students learning and grasping the material that we are teaching them, and like, we help them and mold them and like encourage them to, you know, go out in the community, do better, do, do great in school, obey your parents, respect the law and everything. So when we mentor them and encourage them, you can see a big difference in their attitude and appearances and stuff, so, yeah, thank you.
Well, thank, thank y'all. Thank you for your hard work and your dedication. I know, I know I speak for the council that we have, we have been providing some funding for this program for several years now, five or six years, maybe I'm more than that, but more than that, okay? So it's, you know, certainly we, we value the work that you're doing and appreciate all that, all that you do and all the lives that you're touching in the community. So thank y'all for your hard work. Any questions or comments from the council?
I'd just like to tell Mr. Childs, we appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Eric.
And it shows, I mean, you got, everybody needs mentors in their life. It's just, it's, it's just great to see people get out and help and, and make a little extra money on it. Do it.
Thank you, Mr. Eric.
I'm just glad to see you have students that's doing the work, and you're imparting in them, as well as them, they are imparting in the other children, so thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Win-win.
We thank you for standing in the gap and for filling in those places, those holes that many of the people, many of them people are facing life, so we really do appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good job. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
It's not encouraging to hear that you have a waiting list. I really hate that. But that being said, I'd like to publicly challenge the county government to participate in funding your program as well. I think that you're not exclusive to the city of LaGrange, are you?
No, sir.
I'd like to publicly challenge the county commission to support this program as well. Thank you for the work that you do, and keep it up. Is your father McKinley's guy?
That is my father.
Tell your father I said hello. He is a great man, and he too is my mentor.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Before I go, on the county's behalf, he had, they have reached out to me and said that they will be getting with you guys to be some kind of match, so I didn't want, you know, make it seem like they weren't doing anything, so.
They sometimes just need us to lead the way.
That's right, that's right. I got one more thing for you guys, so she received a scholarship a month ago, and this is our recipient for this month, Ms. Camilla Dunn.
Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate your support.
Thank y'all. I'm good.
Under petitions and communications, I have a board of planning and zoning appeals recommendation to annex and zone property located on New Airport Road.
Mr. Mayor, we'll turn this over to Mr. Costal, but just one point of order, we need to go back a few minutes. One, get to some point, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. An applicant has requested that roughly 1.4 acres of property located in the 200 block of New Airport Road be annexed into the city, and then it be zoned as Campus General Industrial. On Monday, December 13th, the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals met and unanimously recommended the rezoning of this parcel. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to set this annexation and rezoning request for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, February the 8th.
I have a motion to second to call a public hearing and discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have a board of planning and zoning appeals recommendation to rezon property located on Vernon Street.
And, Mr. Costal, answer your question.
An applicant has requested that a portion of three parcels totaling roughly 22 acres located in the 1400 block of Vernon Street be rezoned from suburban, single-family residential to corridor, medium-density residential. On Monday, December 13th, the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals met and unanimously recommended the rezoning of these parcels. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to set this rezoning request for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, February the 8th.
Move a public hearing.
Have a motion second to call a public hearing and discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Costal. To, to return to item five on our agenda, council members have all been given copies of the minutes of our regular council meeting held on December 14th. I would have to pay the motion. Have a motion second approved. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We will move to council member reports. I know many of us have already made some remarks tonight, but do any council members have anything additional that they would like to report to the council?
No report.
I think I want to recognize, I read, I read in the newspaper somewhere that our mayor, the city of LaGrange mayor, was recognized as one of the 50 most influential people in Georgia.
Notable Georgia. I'm not sure what I'm doing. Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
I, I have one report. I'd like to wish the entire city a happy new year and a prosperous and healthy year.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes. City manager report, Ms. Kelsey.
A few tonight, Mayor. The financial statements for December as well, the payment of bills over $2,000 are attached to your general materials. Don't have any particular comments at this time, but we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for the city manager? Okay.
And finally, Mayor, we have had some inquiries about some property that the city owns on Calaway Church Road, which is off SL White Road. It's about 14 acres. City staff would recommend that council declare the property surplus and take sealed bids. We have had a recent appraisal done, which we will share with potential interested buyers of the property, but don't recommend at this time to set a minimum bid on the property.
Would approve.
I have a motion to second to declare the property surplus and accept bids. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay? Anything else, Ms. Kelsey?
Thanks, Ellen, Mr. Mayor.
All right, under first readings, I have an... Under first readings, I have an ordinance that is a UDO, unified development ordinance, unified development ordinance text amendments.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of La Grange to amend the code of the city, to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use zone. That would be the wrong caption.
Strike that.
Take two. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of La Grange to amend the code of the city, to amend the zoning ordinance of the city, to modify the space dimension standards for certain dwellings within MX zoning districts, to amend lot front requirements for dwellings with front-facing garages within designated MX districts, to modify driveway and curb cut widths to allow unified development plans for certain properties under common ownership, to amend garage orientation requirements in multiple residential districts, to adopt additional architectural standards for residential structures, to amend architectural requirements regarding corrugated metal panels and pre-engineered color-coded walls, to modify location of permitted uses for social service facilities, drive-through facilities, and personal care homes within designated zoning districts, to amend bypass lane width for drive-through facilities, to modify certain setback distances, to amend landscape zone administrative variances, to clarify special use permit procedures, to repeal conflicting ordinances to provide per separability to fix and effective date and for other purposes.
And just for the benefit of, that was a long caption. I appreciate you reading that. For the benefit of those who might have some curiosity about it, I know we have some youth council members joining us tonight. Last summer, after a two-year process, the city council adopted a unified development ordinance, which was essentially a rezoning of the entire city. So it was a rewrite of the entire zoning ordinance and development ordinance for the city. It was a two-year process with lots of public input, listening sessions, and engaged a consultant to lead the city through the process. And that was done back last summer, and as the consultant told us from day one, after you adopt this, six months in, you're going to find some things that just don't quite make sense or don't quite work right, because it was a 300-page document, 330-something page document. So this, true to his word, six months later, here we are fixing some issues. And most of this is cleanup, a lot of it's technical stuff. It affects a lot of different parts of the ordinance, but it's not substantively changing as much as it might sound like it is. There are some substantive changes in there as well, but I think y'all get a sense of how the city staff works through these processes, takes it very seriously, tries to make sure that the ordinances reflect what the intent of the council was in supporting a unified development ordinance. So thank y'all for your hard work on that, particularly Mr. Costel, because I know you work really closely with local homeowners and developers to try to tweak some of these provisions. We also have a first reading, increasing wrecker service towing fees.
An ordinance of mayor and council of the City of La Grange to increase certain maximum rates for wrecker service towing pursuant to the block towing system, to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix and effective date and for other purposes.
Okay, we have no second readings tonight. We have a number of board and agency appointments, which is typical for our first meeting of the year, and a lot of these come due on January 1, and we will renew most of these, because these are active members of these boards who wish to continue serving. First, we have the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals, a five-year term to succeed Skip Smith.
Make motion to approve, second.
Reappoint.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to reappoint. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have a La Grange Development Authority, five-year term to succeed Meg Kelson.
Move reappoint.
Have a motion, a second, to reappoint. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have the La Grange Governmental Finance Corporation, a one-year term to succeed Jim Thornton, Mark Mitchell, Legree McCamey, Willie Edmondson, Tom Gore, Nathan Gaskin, Jim Arrington, and Meg Kelson.
Move reappoint.
Have a motion, a second, to reappoint. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We have the La Grange Tru County Memorial Park Board, which some of you may be interested to know is the board that manages Lafayette Square. So under the original gift of Lafayette Square by Tru County to the City of La Grange in the 40s, I think, after the courthouse burned and was relocated, there was created a memorial park board to manage the square. And for many years, the one member of that park board, and it is a one-member board, the one member has been Luther Jones, but after some discussion, to streamline the operations, the council has discussed appointing Sue Olson to serve as the member of the La Grange Tru County Memorial Park Board. Is there a?
Motion, make a motion.
Second clerk, Sue Olson, to the board.
I have a motion, a second, to appoint the city clerk, Sue Olson, to the memorial park board. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Congratulations, Sue. We have the Municipal Court Judge, a one-year term to succeed James Baker.
Move reappoint.
Have a motion, a second, to reappoint. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And then for his assistant, we have an Assistant Municipal Court Judge, a one-year term to succeed Luther Jones.
Move reappoint.
Have a motion, a second, to reappoint. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. Then we have the All Important Records Committee for the city, which we are, as Dr. Gore alluded to, he has been interested in city government for a long time, his father having been a longtime city council member, and he himself having now served, is this fifth term?
Twenty years.
Twenty, yes, yeah. So he serves as, I think, the one member of our records committee. Is there a motion?
Motion, approve.
Reappoint.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to reappoint. Dr. Gore, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have the Solid Waste Management Authority. Again, that is us. It's a one-year term to succeed Jim Thornton, Legree McCamey, Willie Edmondson, Tom Gore, Mark Mitchell, Nathan Gaskin, and Jim Arrington.
Move reappoint.
Have a motion, a second, to reappoint. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have the Tru Council on Aging, a three-year term to succeed Wayne Pittman.
Move reappoint. Second.
Have a motion, a second, to reappoint. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We have the Tru County Board of Health, a one-year term to succeed Norma Tucker.
Move reappoint.
Have a motion, a second, to reappoint. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And we have the Tru County FEMA Board, a one-year term to succeed Fire Chief John Brandt.
Move reappoint. Second.
Have a motion, a second, to reappoint. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. And then finally, we need to appoint a mayor pro temp. And as, if you don't know, the way we do this, the council appoints a mayor pro temp, and traditionally, we rotate between District 1 and District 2, and we appoint the member of the council in that district who was, who served, not the most recent, but the least recent, I guess is the right term, served in that role, and I think everybody knows who that is. Is there a motion?
Motion that we put Dr. Willie T. Edmondson to mayor pro temp.
I have a motion, I have a second, from Councilman McCamey. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. Ms. Van Shor, would you like to close us?
Yes, sir. We have two bits of good news for this evening. La Grange Fire Department, they officially completed its first paramedic class. They started the program in August of 2020 with 10 students, and all 10 passed the program. They now have to pass a few more tests to get their certifications. Huge shortage of paramedics in our area, so adding 10 more is a huge benefit in our community. The La Grange Police Department is proud to report the hiring of four police officers who started in either the LPD's Cadet or Explorer programs. They include Officer Julie Meacham and Officer Mohammed Salehi from the Cadet program, Officer Braylon Dozier from both the Explorer and the Cadet programs, and then Officer Riley Densmore, who completed her internship, and La Grange College Servant Scholarship requirements at LPD, as well as participated in the Cadet program. So very successful in hiring those four.
Great. Good news. Appreciate their new role and their service to our community. We stand adjourned.